I'd like to take the moment to call this meeting to order. And also, I'd like everybody to join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection, which will be an actual moment. And now, if we could have the roll call?
Arjana Aliar. Eric O'Rand.
Here.
Kyle Liederman.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
And John Mast.
Here. Now, if you'll stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have an executive session that we need? Not hearing one? I'll go right on to 1.6. Mr. Murray, that's you.
Mr. President, members of the Board. It is recommended the district must adopt a 2021-22 budget no later than July 15 of 2021 and file the adopted budget with the Mojave County School Superintendent and the Superintendent of Public Instruction no later than July 17, 2021. The proposed budget summary was posted on the Arizona Department of Education website on June 24, 2021. In accordance with ARS 15-905A2, districts that maintain a website must provide a link on their website to ADE's website where the district's proposed budget summary can be reviewed. Districts must also email the school finance budget team a clickable link to their webpage where the link to the proposed budget was placed. A copy of the email and a screenshot of the website will be retained in the file located in the district's business office. The full proposed and adopted budgets are kept on file at the district business office and in the governing board minutes and are made available to the public upon request. So at this time, this is a budget hearing, allowing for anyone, Mr. President, is under your direction to call for that hearing and allow any members who are present to issue comment if there are any comments or questions about the proposed budget.
I would call for the budget hearing.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Does anybody have comments over the budget? Mr. Murray, do you have a presentation?
That presentation, actually, there's an action item later on in the meeting for the adopted budget, but there will be no presentation, just an open period for, again, anybody to comment on what was proposed back in June.
Okay, so then we'll move on to call to the public? Do we have any calls to the public? None. The spotlight's in recognition Lake Havasu Education Association's Representative Carol Nowakowski. She contacted me on Facebook Messenger and told me she wasn't in town. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. That moves us on to item number six, which is action items. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the expenditure of insurance proceeds during the fiscal year 2022. According to ARS 15-1103, this action is required to expend insurance proceeds which the district may receive in connection with insurance recoveries. At this time, we do not know what those losses or recoveries may be. However, this action prepares the district for events that may occur.
Do I hear a motion on 6.1?
I move that we accept 6.1 as presented.
I'll second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. Mr. Murray, 6.2?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the disposition of litigation proceeds during the fiscal year 22. According to ARS 15-1107, this action is required to expend litigation recovery proceeds which the district may receive in connection with litigation recoveries. At this time, we do not know what those recoveries may be. However, this action prepares the district for events that may occur.
Keith, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we accept 6.2 as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Time delay.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. 6.3?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the adoption of the annual expenditure budget for fiscal year 22. Per ARS 15-905, the governing board must adopt and send a copy of the adopted budget to the county school superintendent no later than July 17. The district's general budget limit cannot be exceeded unless additional funding is made available through the budget revision process. The presentation of the budget occurred during the proposed budget special session, and the expenditure budget sheets, including summary pages, were provided and are also available on the district's website.
Questions, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve 6.3 as presented.
I just want to make a comment. This being my first year on the Board, I just really appreciate the transparency and the detail that has gone into the budget. You know, members of the community have access to it. It is a very transparent process. I think Mr. Murray deserves a lot of credit for being very, I would say, conservative with his estimates and keeping the school district running in a very, you know, in a very efficient manner. So I just wanted to say that, to put credit where credit is due.
Thank you. Can I make just a quick comment, too, to Mrs. Ramon's question she had during the proposed budget? She asked about function code 2300. There's a decrease of about 11.9%. So we started through the payroll process. It used to be practice here where we would pay all of our insurance proceeds, workers' comp. That gets paid through a group called the Alliance. And it used to be in years past where we would send them a check annually, all upfront, and those expenditures were coded to the general admin line. But because we all know something like workers' comp is actually spread out through many, many, many people, we decided to run that through payroll so that it would generate actual workers' comp figures to live data, which then also pushes those expenditures to the appropriate account code for each individual. So teachers are function 1,000 instructional employees, so those expenditures are actually coded to the function 1,000 line, so that way... So in this case here, for the budget process, that's why you're seeing a bigger shift from one function code and showing a reduction, and that's spread out over many function codes. So I hope that answers Mrs. Ramon's question.
It does. Thank you for the background information.
That's all I have.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. 6.4, Jamie, that's you.
Mr. President and governing board, it is recommended that the board approve the request to purchase computers for the Lake Havasu High School software development and allied health biology paid for by Western Arizona Vocational Education District. Waive-CTED not to exceed $85,000. The Lake Havasu Unified School District Career and Technical Education Department is requesting the purchase of new computers not to exceed $85,000 through a Waive-CTED grant and funding. The funds will be used to upgrade the software development lab as well as allied health mobile lab with new computers. Currently, the software development lab is using a handed-down lab for music and audio. Those computers are beginning to fail or in need of replacing as they are approaching 10 years of age. The computers purchased for allied health biology will be used to interact with lab and classroom assignments. The computers in the allied health lab will go to the Law and Public Safety Program to replace the older and outdated Macs that are currently in use. This purchase will directly affect three CTE programs and allow our students to access digital programs and platforms needed to keep up with current industry standards and program certifications. This item has been reviewed by purchasing.
I move that we accept 6.4 as presented.
I second.
I'm surprised we got teenagers out of computers at all.
A school district can do that.
That's what I do for a living, so I'm like, what?
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. Okay, 6.5, Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, Board members, it is recommended the governing board approve the purchase of student transportation or bus purchases through Canyon State Bus Sales at an amount not to exceed $575,000. Bond funds are available to purchase student transportation as presented to the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One voters prior to the November 8, 2016 election. Quotes from Canyon State Bus Sales are attached to this agenda action item for review by the governing board, and by way of breakdown of that $575,000, you can see that we are requesting to purchase 184-passenger route buses and 242-passenger special need buses. We are utilizing the Mojave Educational Service Cooperative, and an approval amount of $575,000 has been requested to cover any incidentals, and this item has been reviewed by purchasing.
This has all of the cooler stuff in it? Air conditioning?
Yes, all of our buses have what's known as the Havasu Special air conditioning.
Good.
And can I just make, I just want to highlight that one paragraph about bond funds being used. It's really important because I know that there may be people who have not been in this town since 2016. We know times are tough for many, but we are utilizing these voter-approved bond funds based on what was presented to the public in the public pamphlet, and we are definitely tracking in alignment with what we said we were going to do. So these aren't just purchases that we're making because we want to make purchases. These are special voter-approved funds that were designated for a certain purpose, and we're just following through with what we've promised the voters. So I want to make sure that's clear. This and another action item, I believe it's the next action item, follow right in line with that.
I move that we accept 6.5 as presented.
And I'll second.
I do have one question. My question is, are these buses being purchased to replace buses that need to be replaced, or is it adding to our fleet?
No, it'll, well, it'll, it may do both, but it really will replace buses that need to be replaced. We do have several buses that are in line to go to auction because of high mileage and also maintenance issues. So we, part of that voter-approved bond initiative, it was communicated that we would like to rotate our fleet to the tune of three buses per year for 10 years to eventually phase out all of our old fleet and replace it with newer buses, where at the end of that 10-year period, our oldest bus would be 10 years old. But also keep it in mind that we do have a couple buses that we keep aside for spares because even what we think would be the most reliable has a bad day from time to time, and we need to have a backup so that we can continue our services.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Absolutely yes. Okay, let's go to the next one, Mr. Murray, 6.6.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. It is recommended the governing board approve the purchase of seven vehicles, being four maintenance trucks, two utility vans for maintenance, and one utility van for the technology department from Sanderson Ford at a cost not to exceed $280,000. In order to maximize the operation and efficiency of aging in our high-mileage vehicles, the rotation of vehicles to provide backup transportation is necessary. Upon delivery of the new vehicles, rotations will occur, and any remaining vehicles will be sent to auction. Sanderson Ford will utilize the state contract, you can see that number listed, for the procurement of these vehicles. Quotes are included in this action item for your review that are summarized there below, the breakdown of the seven vehicles, prices including all requested options, preparations, service, and parts, plus tax and delivery. Although the quotes totaled $263,806.70, a not-to-exceed amount of $280,000 is being requested to cover incidentals. Essor Bond and our other approved capital fund purchases, funds for purchasing will be used, and this item has been reviewed by purchasing.
Do you have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Absolutely yes. Okay, Mrs. Stone?
Mr. President, members of the Board, it's recommended that the board approve the second presentation of revised policy IKFB graduation exercises per Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory for April 2021. As you remember from the first reading, this is for a student who is a member of a federally recognized Indian tribe or who is eligible to be enrolled as a member of a federally recognized Indian tribe. They may wear traditional tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance at a graduation ceremony, and objects of cultural significance, traditional tribal regalia include an eagle feather or eagle plume.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move that we accept 6.7 as presented.
I second.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. 6.8, Mrs. Walter?
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is recommended the governing board approve the memorandum of understanding between Havasu Community Health Foundation and the Lake Havasu Unified School District for After-School Student Assistance Program, known as the SAP program, for the 2021-22 school year. The memorandum establishes a formal commitment between the parties to support collaborative work in better addressing the behavioral and social needs of our at-risk students through the Student Assistance Program in all of the elementary schools, with the intent of providing services in the middle and high school if opportunity and time permits. Havasu Community Health Foundation agrees to administer and provide the Student Assistance Program to support the elementary schools, and the district agrees to provide facilities as in kind. Parent consent is required to participate in the program. This program was previously approved and offered during the school week. The agreement has been reviewed by our legal counsel and is attached for your approval. And just to clarify, this is not costing the district anything. In kind is the fact that we have available buildings that we can make available as needed.
Just as a note, I just want to say that this is a great collaboration in town. This is what being with community is all about. They help us at no cost. I mean, how can you beat that? In doing something that they have expertise with, with our kids, with parental consent, and we provide facilities to help them to do it. So kudos to this program. I'll make a motion to accept 6.8 as presented.
And I'll second.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. And then 6.9, Mrs. Walter?
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the board approve the purchase of contracted occupational therapy with the Steppingstone Group for the 2021-22 school year, not to exceed $112,000. The district has taken action to recruit qualified therapy-related service staff but has had difficulty filling these openings. The Steppingstone Group is an approved vendor as part of the SAFE contract, and the number is there for that agreement. We are requesting approval of the purchase of the contracted occupational therapy services for the 2021-22 school year with the Steppingstone Group at a rate not to exceed $74 per hour. The district is obligated to ensure the provision of services for eligible students to receive a free, appropriate public education, where students requiring related services as required under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, known as IDEA. Funds from the MNO budget will be used to pay for the services. This has been reviewed by purchasing and legal.
Quick question. I know this is a definite need. I'm just wondering how the $74 per hour figure is arrived at?
The SAFE contracts, they go out to bid, and that's the market rate. Actually, many of them are over that. The 74 is that particular company, and they do have an available vendor or provider to be able to do that. Many of them, that may have different rates. When we call to see if they have them available therapists, they do not have any to go out to contract and try to market that bid. But it is a going rate, unfortunately.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve 6.9 as presented.
I will second.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. And now, Jamie, it's your turn again.
Mr. President and governing board, it is recommended that the board approve the purchase of schools' PLP licensing to support online learners during the 2021-22 school year in an amount not to exceed $50,000. LHUSD used schools' PLP during the 2021 school year as the provider for distance learning. Approximately 100 students, grades 7 through 12, have requested to continue with Havasu Online Schools' PLP. Schools' PLP utilizes a consistent instructional design across all content, K-12, colorful icons, HD images, and concise formatting that readers and non-readers can easily adjust to with embedded video instruction and scripted parent guides. This platform provides smooth transition from onsite instruction to virtual learning in synchronous and asynchronous environments. In addition, Schools' PLP uses concurrent licensing that allows students to be added easily throughout the year without incurring extra costs. Schools' PLP provides the resources to meet LHUSD's current needs. Schools' PLP would be procured through Mojave Educational Service Contract 17J BACK 1004. Havasu Online students would be supported by a certified teacher and counselor. This has been approved by the business department and sent to legal for review. Essor funds will be used to pay for Schools' PLP.
I move we accept 610 as presented.
I'll second.
I second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. Now, that takes us to 611, Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, members of the Board, it's recommended the board approve vouchers for June 2000, or the June 20, I'm sorry, the June 2021 vouchers are not available this time. They'll be available the next meeting. Since this is the beginning of July, we don't have that much time to turn around a report to give you all of June's voucher activity, so that'll come to you next month. But we are asking that you approve student activity funds for K-12 for May and also auxiliary funds for May 2021.
I move that we approve 611 as amended.
And I'll second.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. That takes us to 612.
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the renewal of the amended Arizona Schools Medicaid Direct Service Agreement for CESE Education Corporate for Medicaid in the Public Schools, known as MEPS, billing services for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. The district participates in the Medicaid in the Public Schools program, and this agreement is for the monthly billing services for direct services that are reimbursable to the district. The district has chosen to build a reduced rate to lessen the risk of payback to access at the end of each annual cost data reporting cycle that takes about two years to complete. They do a study, and they do the actual cost, and that's where that adjustment is. The district is looking at CESE Education Corporate under the SAFE contract renewed by, on June 23, 2020, under the RFP noted there. The contract may be extended for an additional three years. Purchasing has reviewed, and it has been previously reviewed by legal. It's a yearly housekeeping that we do.
I'll make a motion to approve 6.12 as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
Eric O'Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Liederman?
Yes.
John Mast.
Yes. And 613 is Jamie's.
Mr. President and governing board, the LHUSD governing board has previously approved the purchase of core knowledge materials through Amplify. It is being requested to purchase Amplify materials not to exceed $50,000 annually for the next five years. LHUSD has previously used DIBELS and MAP to assess early literacy skills. Amplify M-Class uses DIBELS as a screener for dyslexia and an assessment tool for early literacy development. DIBELS is teacher-administered and easily scored. Amplify M-Class allows for benchmark testing and progress monitoring. The results from the assessment give teachers and interventionists specific information about what type of intervention is needed and what materials should be used for that intervention. These materials align with our Core Series, so while students gain reading skills, they are still being exposed to the general curriculum. ARS 15701 and ARS 15704 require that all districts conduct a universal literacy and dyslexia screener using an approved assessment. Amplify M-Class has been approved as a screening vendor. The cost of this Amplify purchase is $24,224.40 plus tax for a license for two years of assessment, literacy kits, and training. We are requesting to spend up to $50,000 with Amplify during the school year as they are our primary curriculum provider for much of our K-8 needs. Essor funds specify that funding is used to combat academic loss. Amplify M-Class will meet that need. M-Class expenditures will be paid out of Essor.
Just some quick questions going along there. Just to get out on the public record, this is, we're replacing Galileo, or what was it?
This is all for early literacy screening. So for the past few years, we've been using both DIBELS and MAP, so we've actually purchased both of them. This is now just moving to DIBELS, and then it's still teacher-administered, but it's giving us the data through software backing and then tells the teachers exactly if this student is in need of support for phonemic awareness. Here's the skills that they need. So it tells the teachers exactly then what skills they need to do and provides them the lessons to support that.
And my understanding is this is totally a And my understanding is this is totally aligned with core knowledge?
It's totally aligned with core knowledge, so, um, the assessment, um, but the, the assessment is an assessment, um, but the, the supports align with core knowledge. So our goal is always that students are going to be in their regular classroom for as much of the day as possible, but if they're out, this now aligns, so they're not missing that important background knowledge, which is the whole point of core knowledge, is that all students have the same background knowledge, so as they, um, get older, they're able to use that knowledge in, in higher levels, so this supports that.
Yeah, and that's something I'm very excited about, that we are getting curriculum in order and making everything, uh, better for the students, more aligned, so I think this is an exciting change. I will move that we, we approve, uh, six thirteen as presented.
I'll second that.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Alren?
Yes.
And John Mast.
Yes. That takes us to, uh, item number seven on our, uh, which is informational from the superintendent and board members. Do you guys have anything you want to talk about? Hearing nothing, I think.
Okay. I have something to talk about. Um, we are just excited that, um, we are welcoming our new teachers to the district on July 19th. That is just a few, not even quite two weeks away, um, and welcoming all of our teachers back on the 26th. So parents, I'm sure, are excited. School actually starts on August 2nd. Um, we are looking forward to a normal opening, welcoming everybody back, um, on campus, and parents should expect some information coming home from their schools to share all the details of what that will look like, um, as we head back to school.
Okay, do we have any more calls to public? Haven't gotten any. Everybody showed up for a board meeting and they didn't put in anything? Do I have any board suggestions for future items for our, uh, agenda? And if the press media has any clarifying questions, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Eric Alren?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Yes. We're adjourned.